City Council meeting on July twenty first, two thousand and twenty has come to order. Can we please stand up for Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor Ascanosa will give us the pledge of allegiance?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to everybody at home, please mute your mics. Can we please stand up for a moment in silence for the first responders? Please be seated.
Also, that was for military members also.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Just a reminder to folks at home, please mute your phones because you are in a public meeting. There is a potential for whatever is said in the house could be heard outside. And before we begin, are there any staff members calling you from home? There's nobody calling from home. Kurt, may I have the roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Baptista. Councilmember Aguilar. Mayor Protem Garcia. Mayor Samra.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember King is not in attendance, but his absence is excused.
Thank you. Closed session announcement. Their reportable action, action was given to the staff. Council, staff, any changes to the agenda? Seeing now, nothing coming forward, we'll go to Supervisor Ascanosa. You don't need to take your phone, you already have a...
She can do it.
Yeah.
Do you need a council? This is...
I'm gonna lower it down. Is that better?
Yeah.
I don't know if it's too loud.
I'm sorry, a statement from the county, uh, Holy Hell, similar regarding contact tracing in Berset County. Uh, recently, information was misinterpreted. The county in Berset County is not allowed to conduct things. The Berset County Department of Public Health completed conduct contact tracing as required by state. This includes contacts in all possible cases, conducting a robust contact review, including providing verbal instructions to isolate, identifying the suspected source of disease, identifying of people infected, providing information, uh, and information to the cases. Holy Hell also contacts affected employees, employers, and one of their employees is positive and resources and technical assistance are provided to these employers. The California State Department of Public Health compliments the Berset County this meeting is contact tracing requirement. In addition, Berset County is actively looking to improve upon its contact tracing through the hiring of twenty-one new extra health staff. So far, Berset County is in the process of filing, filling eleven of those positions with bilingual individuals. These new positions are funded by four hundred thousand dollar. The Berset County... Our mission is to help the living and... One man now than ever. We have... Local funders identified. Uh, I also received a letter from Dr. He says he referred to the bash. It was nervous. It did diminish when, when the mobilization was started due to the reallocation of personnel and funding which he would have made aware of. There was intense pressure to open up the economy as you all know, you know, we were getting constant, uh, groups, you know, wanting that the economy opened. Open up the economy and stay at a level of... We definitely need more contact tracers and now that there is the funding and there has been the training to more, to have more tracers, something, now mentioned in the Count Matters article, as I don't know if you or everyone read that, this will expand. I agree with you that the effort has to reach the Latino community in particular. The Count Matters article was misleading as it's contributed to confusion and blaming and division at a time that we need in a, in a bad effort. Contact tracing is a valuable tool in an arsenal of defense. However, with delays of up to seventy or more in getting results, contact tracing becomes much less effective as a tool in mitigation. The most important tool we have is to present a clear message of the risk of not wearing masks, social distancing, and hygiene. Unfortunately, as you well know, we have not had this in, in this community, at least not until just recently. So, um, that's all I have now. I'm not pressing questions by the council or other.
What's your question?
Juan Aguilar here. Uh, just, uh, thank you for, uh, for the comment and clarifying that because I know there was some concern from some people that you guys have completely stopped contact tracing, uh, but I'm thinking for kind of clarifying, um, exactly what's going on with the council. So, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, we were just, uh, you know, Supervisor Mediano spoke to, uh, Count Matters and then they spoke to me and then, like I said, I haven't had, I haven't gotten an update on, uh, on contact tracing when, uh, on the call list and so that's what we said, you know, we weren't aware of exactly what the Holy Hell was doing. So, uh, you know, that's, that was the response, but of course, you know, newspaper cell and, uh, you know, they, they, uh, they didn't say what was, what was true. Because, you know, I've gotten calls from other supervisors in different counties and say, hey, what's, what's up with you guys? And so, um, you know, we're just trying to clarify. Also, in response to, uh, tomorrow, we'll have a meeting with, uh, some people from Busta Farms, uh, Bill Meadows from, uh, the California Culture Association and some, uh, county people I don't know if they contacted, uh, you mayor, regards to having a meeting. Yeah, so, um, I will, it's tomorrow at ten A.M., but, uh, I will check and if not, I'll send you information so if you want to meet with us as well. So, um, so we're just trying to work together, make sure that Holy Hell is working on Busta Farms and any company that, that has a, a breakout of, uh, of, uh, of view of more, uh, limited the, the contact virus. So, just trying to support, uh, all the company, okay? So, thank you very much. Any other questions? Thank you.
Supervisor, I do. I have a question. Uh, about a year ago or so, and I don't remember the exact date, did you live in somebody type six fire truck, as you're aware?
A what?
A type six fire truck?
Uh, oh, yeah, that's right.
This has been almost a year, maybe longer, and we're still trying to get an agreement from the county to be able to use that. Can you tell us why we have all this equipment sitting idle and if county doesn't move forward with our agreement to use the truck?
Why, you know, the last time I was there, there was a mission and then we had, we had met, had a meeting and I understood with the result that it was going to be a strike, but I, I guess it was never resolved.
No, I mean, we, we have this equipment that can be used and meantime, you know, where it is in the center of the city and not being utilized, not only within the city, but outside of city limits as well.
But...
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, uh, and so I just want to bring it to your attention, we would like to get a response from the county to find out what's going on and how many of...
Yeah, I'll take your seat or I'll, I'll break apart, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, move on to, uh, because this is our second meeting of the month, there are no staff reports.
Yay!
We do, let's have yay. Does somebody...
That was, that was Jackie.
Okay, Jackie. So, uh, but we do have a city manager announcements report, uh, Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much. There are a few items that I'd like to talk to you about. First of all, I want to make sure that you can hear me okay. Can everybody hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? So, the first item, Council, we have a four hundred eighty unit subdivision for apartment complex that's being considered here in Livingston. And as part of every project, there is a sequel analysis that is discussed. And we, and as part of the sequel analysis, one of the elements in there is the biological report. The biological report identifies the species...
Mr. Ramirez, can you stop me there? We're... We could barely hear you or you have like echo in the background.
Can, can you hear me a little bit better now?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Okay. So, I'll just start over for, for sake of, uh, of everybody. So, one of the things that I was mentioning is in relation to a project that we have in town that's being considered in town, it's a four hundred and eighty unit, uh, apartment complex that's being proposed here in town. Part of the, of any project in town is we have to do some type of sequel analysis. Part of the sequel analysis requires that a bio loss report actually be performed. And one of the, one of, one item that's at, uh, flora and fauna might be, uh, endangered, uh, or, or need, need some type of attention. This particular project, uh, they identify that there's a Swanson hawk that's actually nesting in the area. The report calls out seventeen credits, so a one for one ratio for the, uh, per credit, uh, for every, for every acre, one unit of credit. This has created an undue hardship for the, uh, the actual developer itself because we're looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars of mitigation cost. So, the way it works is they have to go out and look for conservation and mitigation banks that might sell credits for, in this case, the red tail hawk. And so, the cost is anywhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars a unit or a credit. So, I would like to ask Council, uh, for a little bit of direction tonight. I'll tell you what I've done so far. What we've done so far is we've kind of just, uh, talked about it within staff and we looked at different, um, areas and possible mitigations, uh, aspects of this problem. Was, of course, uh, is, is, if, if the property owner wants to go ahead and pay the seventeen credits, then he can move ahead with the project. Of course, that's one of the major issues where he's kind of stopped right now. Number two would be to elevating the, the E I, the, the sequo to an E I R, or another fifty to sixty thousand dollars to do what is called a stipulated, um, uh, overriding, statement of overriding consideration, okay? However, that would take the city off the hook to address this issue because the actual red tail hawk, the foraging area or the area of interest is two point five miles from the, from the point of where the actual nest is at. So, that's basically the entire city. And we have a plan that the person works on it. So, we have to look at long term, not just short term. So, then we started to think about, well, what other things that can we do? What can we explore? So, we started looking at, well, you know what? The city does have a hundred acres of water treatment plant. Could that possibly be, you know, converted into a, uh, a conservation area that we can then somehow, uh, look at the feasibility, might be able to incorporate other credits for other flora and fauna, whether it be tiger salamander, burrow owl, or kit fox? Would it be feasible? We don't know. We would have to do a biological inventory on that piece of property. I know it's only going to take two years or a little bit more. The need is now, but it's something we have to look at long term because it just doesn't impact this specific project. So, with that information, um, I just wanted to see if Council had, you know, some more clarifying questions or if you needed that information to give staff direction so we can move forward. Again, it's a lot of money. Uh, I, I mean, certainly, uh, the city's not going to be able to mitigate all of that for the specific property owner, but, uh, because this is a, a, a project, a, a, an issue that's going to impact us moving forward, we should look at coming up with some issues because it will add costs to, uh, projects in the future.
Thank you, uh, Council. Any questions or comments at this time?
Uh, go ahead. This is Juan Aguilar. Um, so in regards to the developer, you had discussions with them already and what are their thoughts?
The developer thoughts is, you know, for the city possibly to incorporate some of these costs as part of the general plan and try to address some of these under the general plan, which would add more money that we would have to come up with on our end. Or two, look and see, you know, if, if maybe they pick up the, the additional cost for the E I R and, and, and if the council was to go ahead and do that statement of overriding consideration, then he's met his obligations, but we would still have to come up with viable solutions moving forward. Or three, he basically just steps away from the project because he believes that his project doesn't pencil out with the additional cost of anywhere between one eighty and two hundred So, at this point, it's, it's just a little bit of direction and we're not making any major decision here. It's just whether or not Council would like to have us spend a little bit more money to look at some of these solutions, a possible solution, whether it be, uh, you know, a performer for, a business performer for that acreage out there, if that's possibly, you know, uh, again, that's only going to address the long term. The short term has to be addressed either through elevating the sequo to an E I R and doing a statement of overriding consideration or some other solution.
Have we contacted the state or any other agencies for assistance?
Uh, yes, uh, I've contacted several, uh, mitigation and conservation banks. The price ranges anywhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, the, the, the credits have been bought within the region, so we can't go to another state or, uh, farther north. It has to be in this area, so that's, that's kind of the pricing.
Yeah, this is, um, Mayor Protem.
Go ahead, Mr. Ramirez.
Yeah, I mean, I say whatever we can help them out with because in the long run, I mean, it's going to be an investment for the city. Um, we're going to have like, you know, more citizens here, going and spending more money, um, for the city, so that's just my thought on that. Okay. Okay.
So, what are...
Go ahead, Mr.
What are we actually looking at? We're, are we looking at some offset or nesting? I mean, what, what are we looking at?
Yes, so to provide a little bit more information, um, if you go down Main Street, don't go, don't do any hunting or anything like that, okay? But if you go down Main Street, there's a really, there's a, there's, there's a big nest and there's three or four, uh, red hawks, and then there's the pair. And that was identified and because, uh, foul, they, there has to be a mitigation... Because their foraging area is being impacted, which is the seventeen acres where they're looking at building the four hundred and eighty unit apartment subdivision, okay? And so, the biological report said that they have to come up with, they have to pay seventeen credits or come up with seventeen credits. Each credit is anywhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars, therefore the hundred eighty or two hundred thousand dollars. So, that has to be added to the cost of the overall project. The project proponent is saying, geez, that's not really going to pencil out for me. So, city, I need your help. So, how can we help them is what we're trying to come up with. So, if there's appetite by the council to, uh, for us to mitigate some of that, meaning paying some of our own funds to help them, whatever that amount is, if it's twenty thousand, fifty thousand, or half, or none at all, it's, it's up to council. I mentioned that this also impacts our general plan moving into the future because the foraging area now that's been identified is two point five mile radius, that's the entire city. So, projects in the future are going to be impacted and there's a cost associated with that. So, how do we address it? So, one of the things that we were throwing out was if, 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 if we elevate the sequo to an E I R, then the council, at that moment in time, can make some findings and say that this is a statement of overriding consideration and this person would be able to move forward with the project and we would have two or three years to try to figure these things out and we kind of are on the hook for some of the money. And then, the other option, or the other, uh, opportunity here is that we do have a hundred acres, plus or minus, outside of the shooting range, that's currently being decommissioned. Could that possibly be a nature reserve where, I mean, there's mitigation, I mean, there's a, a maintenance cost, setup cost, operational cost? We would have to investigate and see if that's viable. And it could be viable because if you can, uh, have some wetlands out there, you know, have some shrubs, that could be other credits that we don't necessarily need, that we can sell off, get money for, partner with a, a conservation mitigation institution and they can manage everything and then we can sell those off. So, all those things need to be looked at. It's complicated, but that's where it's at.
Okay, real quick, this is Juan Aguilar. To elevate it, uh, are you staying, how, what response, financially what responsibility would the city have at that time?
Well, at this point, I'm sure that the, that we can negotiate with the property owner and say, hey, you would be on the hook for a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars if, if you paid the credits. Here, if you pay for the E I R, that's about anywhere between fifty and sixty, okay? And then the council, if the council so chooses, issues that statement of overriding, overriding consideration, then his project will move forward and then we, moving forward, have to come up with a solution, no matter what, whether he builds it on his own or not, because there's an impact to the general plan in any project moving forward.
So, Mr. Ramirez, so, um, either way, we're going to have to do something on our part?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean specific to that project, but to any other project that might surface.
I would say, uh, try to move forward with that project if it's a significant project, uh, that's going to bring, uh, needed housing. It's, it's a very important project, um, however, I know that we would need to address it, but does that give us, obviously give us the time to figure something out?
I would say get the business, because it is, we should probably form a committee, uh, of, of, made up of, of whatever the council believes, you know, two council members to kind of dive into this a little further, uh, because, uh, again, you know, we're trying to balance the needs on all sides and this will have an impact on all projects moving forward. Creative solution, because I don't think that we, as a city, want to absorb all of the costs either. So, we want to help, uh, grow, but at the same time, uh, you know, balance the needs of our local community, those incoming developers.
And if I may, Mayor, make a quick, quick comment? So, I think the item is not on the agenda today. I think it's part of the, uh, city manager's, uh, comment. I think the intent is to just bring that update to the council and see if there's enough interest in the council to at least potentially have an ad hoc, uh, committee of two members of the council to continue to explore this and bring this back. But at least the city manager wanted to bring this up, that this is an issue going on. These, the, the cities definitely, and the city manager are definitely exploring different solutions to keep moving forward and just wanted to just take a temperature check of the council. It sounds like from the comments, uh, some comments that this is something the council would like to explore further and I think you hear the city manager saying it would be great if the mayor put an ad hoc together in order to keep exploring this, in order to bring back something for the council to vote on.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before I, first of all, we can't take any decisions tonight, so, but, uh, I remember Mr. Ramirez did ask for, to do the comment, can I correct me? Go ahead, please. He didn't do it from there, it's your life.
And, and before he says a couple of comments, I just want to... Uh, timing is also very important, so, and undergrounding of, of the canal, like, so there's some time urgency, that's another reason.
Yeah, what I'm kind of hoping for, after we hit public, is to, the council willing, let the staff to begin for our next meeting, because we can't take any action anyway, so what's some options?
Mayor, uh, I'm addressing the council of the city of Livingston. Um, I think we have around a hundred and ten acres over there, uh, on, uh, behind Busta Farms, which is, uh, where all the, where all the, um, you know, they're, they're using it still, they're trying to re, reclaim those, uh, property over there. Uh, but anytime that, that we're trying to help a developer, I think developers have to pay their own way, is my opinion. And I've asked always, that's always, uh, you know, the way I was when I was in the council year and as mayor, and if the developer was trying to find the credits, they should be paying their, their credits, but not at the expense of the city. Anyway, because I know that, that, uh, that land is industrial space and industrial land is, uh, you know, agricultural ground is thirty-five thousand dollars an acre, anywhere you go right now and up. If, if you go north of here, it's forty, forty-five thousand, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, thirty-five thousand and industrial land runs a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. The one on Sports Complex, we ended up paying two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars back in two thousand and six because it was supposedly, uh, the south part, twelve acres, uh, industrial. We paid two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, for those twelve acres. And so, industrial land is very expensive. The city doesn't have much, uh, industrial land and that's what I'm pushing is that we would have more, more, uh, industrial space. And I know that, you know, a developer's trying to get the credits, but, you know, it's a hundred and ten acres over there, around there, and if the city would like, it's up to you guys, it's my opinion only, okay? Uh, if the city wanted to use some of that space for, for, uh, you know, a park or any ten, twenty, thirty acres, that... any ten, twenty, thirty acres, that, that's fine, as long as that the rest is used for, for a purpose that will build, uh, enough, enough, uh, financing for the future of Livingston, because, you know, if you saw eighty acres out of there at thirty-five to a hundred thousand dollars an acre for industrial space, that would bring a lot of income for the city and would support the, the general fund of the city and for its employees and citizens of this community, so. Uh, but I also think that developers have to pay their own way, and if they need the credits, they have to buy the, the acreage for what it is, is worth, not at, at the expense of the citizens, so, thank you. I think.
Because I was Mr. Escalosa speaking, as a citizen, it is not helping the public. Does anybody else wish to make a comment on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, uh, Mr. Ramirez, uh, at our next council meeting, uh, please, let's, I didn't, you have this stuff, with physical analysis of what it would cost the city, if we can be ready, and, uh, add it to there, and then, uh, we'll give you a better direction from the council, 'cause, you know, we can't make a decision now anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, who's that?
Hi, this is Margarita Aguilar, I forgot to turn on my mic, sorry about that.
Okay, if you forgot to turn on the mic.
Uh, this is new to me.
No, I will go ahead and, uh, allow you, okay? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I just can, it's just a quick comment on, uh, what was brought to the table at this moment. I know we are, you're not making any decisions at this time, but, uh, I recall them saying about forming, um, uh, some kind of a committee to look at this. Um, I know you guys mentioned, uh, two council members, I would like to suggest adding maybe, uh, two people from the, uh, from the city, maybe two residents that could also have an input in that. Uh, I think it'd only be fair, uh, so that's just my first comment, uh, to consider, uh, once this item comes back to, um, to council. Also, um, I do believe, uh, for the last few years, we've been struggling to, uh, get businesses in, uh, our community, uh, with the coronavirus. I know there's people that are not employed, some of them are losing their homes, so I'd like to consider, um, uh, really taking in, in consideration, um, how important these apartment complex, I believe they are. I'm a little un, uninformed with that, uh, for those families, um, so if we could, uh, take a look at that and see if somehow we can help the developer. Uh, again, we do not wanna scare them out, uh, we need them in here, and always keep in mind the well-being of our citizens, and, again, that's a personal comment. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. Uh, what we will do, I'm sorry, did somebody say something? No, if not, uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Aguilar, uh, we will also put that item on the, will be a part of the overall package, we'll talk about it next week, and then, at the time, the council will decide if to form an ad hoc committee and how, what the makeup will be. Uh, so we'll, uh, hopefully your comments speak as well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, did they got Mr. Ramirez, another item?
Just a couple more things real quickly, uh, just wanted to get everybody to know that. Developments that are growing on currently within this. Can you hear me? As it relates to, 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 uh, final comments, one, as it relates to the housing developments that are currently in town, uh, legacy homes and bright development. Legacy has not stopped building homes, uh, all the way through, so it's, it's been great. Uh, bright development, on the other hand, did stop, but, uh, we just got notified that they're gonna pull another nine permits to build, uh, nine additional homes, so that's, uh, really, really good news. I, I believe that they, uh, there's been about fifteen homes sold in the last few months, so, I just wanted to share that with council. And then, I know a lot of folks have been eagerly waiting for, uh, two days to open. They, they were issued a certificate of occupancy, uh, everything was final, so now it's really on their end to open up, so, uh, stay tuned. And that's all I have for, for now, and if you have anything, send me know.
I just wanted to say, um, that I know that we have that general plan meeting come August twelfth, that would be after the first council and prior to the second. So, rather than try to get an ad hoc, maybe we could put that as an item of discussion, because I know that our consultant also has to play a big part in our environmental impact, so we need to utilize him and what I, kind of ideas and what kind of land uses and, and all the regulations that we have for the state wildlife conservation. Um, I think we should make good use of his time at that general plan discussion that's set up for the community also to attend.
So would you like that, like, in the form of a, a, of a workshop then, rather than an ad hoc, and then just invite him to the next council meeting, or?
Seeing the urgency in that, rather than trying to gather concerned citizens and, and, uh, at another time from, well, it's our job, but as council, to come together, I'm, I'm pretty sure that all of us will be present there on the general plan update, um, and the community is invited as well, so if we put the idea out there that we're looking for those types of things, how we can move forward with the consultant on board and in attendance to answer the questions that, uh, that us as citizens can't answer in regards to state laws involving the wildlife that, that we have in our town. So considering the urgency, rather than take more time, use that as an opportunity to discuss.
Well, point taken, thank you. Uh, w- one last comment, um, we do have a timeline for workshops, for budget workshops, so, uh, if... Move the screen here. What we were thinking about, council, is, one, if we could have a special meeting, uh, prior to our next, uh, city council regular, or we can just start our first meeting, uh, on the, uh, on the fourth, and then, there, and we'll have one on the, on the sixth and one on the twelfth for a tentative adoption. If we need more workshops, we can certainly incorporate that. But, so if you can look at, if you look at the workshops here, workshop one, if council is so inclined, we can start on the thirtieth, having our first workshop, then one on the fourth, and then one on the sixth, or we can start on the, I mean, on the fourth, on the sixth, and then on the twelfth. You wanna add anything, uh? I'll get, you come up.
There are council members and, um, city staff, members of the public, Vanessa Portillo, finance director, um, we have put together a tentative, um, calendar or date here to present the budget for, uh, council to review and, uh, potentially approve it as well. So, uh, what we were, uh, what we were proposing is to conduct a, a special meeting, um, for the first workshop to, uh, hold it on July thirtieth, and what we did is, is, um, add a couple other dates to see if any of those dates of your liking will work for you, and then to hold the workshop number two. Say, if we were to hold workshop number one on, uh, July thirtieth, we can hold workshop number two on the, on August sixth, or if we wanted to do a workshop number one on August fourth and hold the next workshop on the sixth or the twelfth. So, we were giving you a couple or some date ranges to see, um, what would work for you. But first, we would need to get direction on workshop number one, so we can establish the following.
I'll take you as a detail. Council, would you prefer to have two workshops or three workshops? Or just do that? Mr. Aguilar, what is your pleasure?
I think two workshops would be fine.
Councilwoman Batista, what is your, Mr. Protem?
Yeah, I'm fine with the two workshops.
Okay, and now for setting the date, what is the pleasure of the council for the two Okay, I, I'd say that we do one on July thirtieth and then one on August fourth. Anybody else have different dates suggested? What about fourth and the fifth? Councilwoman Batista, what is your? Can you do that? Mayor Protem? I'm sorry, what was the question again? Okay, uh, we had talked about two workshops.
Yes.
Now we're trying to pick the date. Uh, on there is, uh, July thirtieth and August fourth, or August fourth and August, and August sixth. What is your decision?
Uh, I'd say the fourth.
And the sixth?
Yeah, what's that land, that's, the sixth is on the Thursday?
I don't have a calendar. Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, that, I mean, that's fine with me.
Okay, we will, uh, start time at six o'clock on the fourth and the sixth. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Ramirez, anything else? Okay, Mr. Aguilar, uh, your councilor announcements and reports, your comments, sir?
Not at this time.
Councilwoman Batista?
I just wanted to remind everybody that, uh, the census caravan will be coming through tomorrow, um, starting around five thirty. Six, six o'clock, um, we are gonna be going through, uh, different, uh, areas in town just to promote and get everybody to participate. I know that the invite was sent out through our police department and our, to our fire department, so really hoping to see everybody out there and, and supporting, um, getting a, a accurate count. I know that, uh, we've been at church, at the masses handing out flyers, um, so hopefully people have looked at that and dialed in, mailed in, or called in, so, and I encourage everybody to complete their census so that, uh, we can get the funds that, um, that are due to our city.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, any comments?
I don't have anything to report at this time, thank you.
And for me, I just wanna congratulate councilmember Kang, becoming a newly, uh, father again, so if he's listening, congratulations, and he has the beautiful addition to the family. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Moving on to public hearing. This is a community, uh, facility district number twenty seven, and, uh, Mr. Ramirez, do we have Golden's Financial Services online? So, go ahead, please.
Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, um, city staff and members of the public. My name is Susanna Hernandez, and I am here to assist staff and, and presenting the CFD annexation number one. Um, is the PowerPoint presentation up?
We're about to put it up right now. And, uh, hold on. Any current?
Take your, take your time.
I'd like to take that time right now, just to share, and my apologies to the Mayor Protem. At the last council meeting, uh, we had some difficulties, we were using a different platform, and, uh, Mayor Protem was having some difficulty calling in, we patched him in, uh, so he did not participate in all of the meeting, so we apologized for that, and then he was able to call in and participate in the second half of the meeting. So, uh, for the record, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what was happening, and so we're gonna make that, uh, as part of the minutes, we will reflect tho- those, uh, comments, uh, and, and technical issues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have a presentation? Okay, uh...
I could also go on without the PowerPoint, it, uh, it's not coming up.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez, uh, we don't have a, a presentation coming up, so go ahead, go over it, please.
It's okay, it's okay. So, um, just to give you some background, uh, the city established the community facilities di- district, uh, in twenty eighteen by resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty, and the CFD established with the intention that future development within the city would annex into the CFD. On May nineteenth of this year, the city council adopted the resolution of intention to annex development into the CFD, and also public health, which is, uh, scheduled for today. The property owner of the new development consented to join the CFD and submitted a ballot to the city of Livingston in favor of the special tax. And the new development will consist of three commercial suites on zero point nine six two acres of land. The special tax is approximately fourteen cents per square foot, and the expected annual special tax revenue from the new development would be approximately five thousand eight hundred. Now, the purpose of the CFD, when it was formed, was to mitigate, mitigate the impact of new development on city services. Uh, the city services consists of police and fire, parks maintenance, street maintenance, drainage maintenance, and landscaping and light maintenance. Currently, within the CFD, there are two properties for which the CFD was squorum for. Um, they are the Panda Express on Winton Parkway and facility, um, on B Street and Winton Parkway. The property to be annexed is in that same area, it's adjacent to CBS, and, um, it's also on B Street. Now, the next steps would be for the city council to hold a public hearing to allow any interested persons to be heard on matters related to the CFD annexation. Then the city council can close the public hearing and adopt the resolution to annex the property into the CFD and calling a special election. After the results of the ballot are announced, the city council can adopt the resolution declaring the election result and directing the recording of amended notice of special tax leave. I'm here to answer any questions.
Just more specifically, this is the Golden Bear Physical Therapy Domino's and, and telephone, uh, cellphone facility that's currently being constructed next to Rensselaar CBS.
Uh, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and is open for any comments, protests, and questions from interested persons concerning the annexation, the commercial development located on Winton Parkway and north of B Street adjacent to CBS and community. So does anybody from the public wish to make a comment, or protest, or have any questions at this time? Anybody on the phone that has any questions or comments or protests at this time? I will wait about another fifteen seconds, just in case somebody's got the mic muted. Last time, does anybody from the public wish to comment? If not, uh, I have a question, do, have we received any protest from the property owner, the property to be annexed into the CFD? Correct?
No, we haven't received any.
So, uh, public hearing is open, and at this time, uh, council, leave this session.
Just, just to, this one, Aguilar, just to clarify, basically, is adapting the current, um, building, the current construction of the building, uh, added to the current existing agreement, right?
Yes, as part of, as part of any development here in town, whether it be commercial or residential, one of the conditions is that they have to participate in, in the, in the CFD if it's commercial, of course, and then LMB, BAD, uh, if it's, uh, residential, non-commercial. So, this, they have to participate in the most recent CFD, which is the twenty seventeen dash one, if I, if I remember it correctly.
Councilwoman Batista, any questions? Mayor Protem, any questions? Negative. Uh, thank you. And for me, this is a routine that we done for every other property, it's cost of doing business. And for me, again, I'm gonna ask one more time before I close the public hearing, does anybody have any questions in the public? does anybody have any questions in the public?
Um, here we have a, uh, sample, you know, what, what, uh, a developer wants to pay, is willing to pay the fees to that way, you know, the property's been maintained, so, um, and before the city was gonna take, uh, uh, so, uh, yeah, I'm, uh, I'm glad that the developer is willing to, uh, to pay those fees and willing to, he can move on and, um, these fees will hopefully directly help pay for, uh, you know, employment, our, it only, uh, a positive and income for, for, uh, for the city, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Espinoza. Any other public comments? If not, then, uh, public portion is now closed. Counsel, any further discussion? If not, uh, does anybody wish to make a motion at this time?
San- Sanchez? Attorney, uh, is it having to be separate?
Yes, it has to be separate, yes.
Make a mo- a motion, uh, adopting the resolution annexing a territory to a community facility district, uh, authorizing the levy of a special tax and submitting levy of tax to qualified electors City of Livingston Community Facility District number twenty seventeen dash seven, Public Services, annexation number one.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Mayor Protem. Uh, clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Sama?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay. We also have a second resolution. Does anybody wish to make a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring result of special annexation election determining validity of prior proceedings and directing the recording of amended notice of special tax lien City of Livingston Community Facility District number twenty seventeen dash one, Public Services, annexation one.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
A second by Mayor Protem. Uh, clerk, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Sama?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay, uh, thank you. Citizen's comment? This session is agenda allowed to members of the public to address the city council, any items? Uh, otherwise, I'll be agenda. Member of the public will recognize that they should come forward, identify themselves, comments are only to keep minute, in accordance with the state open meeting law. New ash would be taken by City Council Committee for items which are on the agenda this evening. Member publicly provided an opportunity to address the city council, Chief Chavez brought up. Public comments? Anybody on the phone first? This, this one, this one moment, sir, I'm calling for the phone people first, okay? Does anybody from calling here wish to make a comment at this time, or two second comment? Uh, so, can nobody come forward? Uh, Mr. Espinoza?
Mayor, thank you, uh, hopefully that will be my last comment, right? Good. Uh, citizens have been complaining about, uh, the speeding on Seventh Street, and, uh, I think that addressed it to you, up to you, addressed it to Chief Chavez in the past, and to, you know, different officers, of, of send pictures, videos, and, uh, I've gotten more videos to pass, and also, both of July, and another, uh, some citizens, uh, no, I don't know, I didn't see the kids, but just show me the video, but kids are not supposed to be cars. But they put out a, a firework in the middle of the street, through the the, uh, a car that ran over the firework, that could have been any, any, uh, any person. And so, um, uh, you know, I don't know the chief, uh, sorry, this president here, I don't know if he's aware of it, but I, I've addressed it to Chief Chavez, he sent out officers, it, you know, we have cited, uh, you know, the, the persons around there, and I, I'm, I'm pretty sure the officers know who it is. But it's just a constant problem, you know, I keep getting the calls all the time, and, uh, you know, I've addressed it here in the past, too. It's just a constant problem, you know, all the officers know who it is, and it's just the speeding, and, you know, they get killed out there. I know other people have complained about that corner, too. So, uh, you know, I, I don't wanna be, you know, I'm calling the officer directly, I just wanna say, make sure that, that it, it gets taken care of, because safety is the first concern, so, thank you very much.
Anybody ask from the public?
What's the mayor, can I respond to that real quick?
Uh, go ahead, please.
Mr. Supervisor?
Uh, I, he's focused, Mr. Espinoza.
Oh, Mr. Espinoza. Anyway, just for the general public, um, I know there have been some complaints across my pension, I know we've, uh, tried to address those, and I know the police department has been actively looking at that area. Um, in addition, I know there's our, our traffic advisory committee, and that's something that should be discussed in those meetings as well. That's it.
Anybody ask from the public? If not, then, uh, citizen's comment is now, uh, closed. Moving on to the set agenda. Arrangements on the consent challenge are considered routine and non-controversial. Will be enacted by one vote unless a separate action is requested by City Manager or City Councilmember. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or a City Manager requests a specific item to be removed. Item number two, this is approval of the work register dated July sixteen, twenty twenty. Approval of the meetings held on May twenty sixth, twenty twenty. Counsel, any comments, or I will entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second it. Uh, I have, uh, Mayor Protem, Councilwoman Batista, you took it. We have a second by Councilmember Batista. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Sama?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, this is a resolution, accepting the completion of the well number eight test well project, authorizing Deputy clerk to file a notice of completion with Resett County and authorize City Manager to make final payment of retention money for the quality well drillers, and I have our engineer coming forward. Go ahead, please.
Uh, this is is better? Much better, yeah. Uh, so we're here to, to accept the, uh, test well that was, uh, performed here a while ago. It's completed, so it's the first step in replacing well number eight. It's basically, uh, a short project, was, uh, completed by quality well drillers, and it was a total of thirty seven thousand six hundred. And now, once, uh, the project is accepted, and after thirty five days of, um, the recording date moves to completion, then there's a release of the five percent retention, which in this case, twenty three thousand dollars, eighteen hundred and eighty dollars. And that's pretty much it.
That is sufficient to refer? Okay, uh, this item is open to the public. Does anybody wish to comment? Hearing no one or seeing no one come forward, this is a close to public. Counsel, discussion? Mr. Aguilar? Councilwoman Batista? Mayor Protem, any discussion?
Uh, negative, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I also don't have anything. I will entertain a motion at this time?
Make a motion, uh, to approve our solution accepting completion for the well number eight test well project, authorizing Deputy six clerk to file a notice of completion with Resett County, and authorizing the City Manager to make final payment of retention money to quality well drillers.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aguilar, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Batista, may I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Sama?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Uh, thank you very much. And, uh, before we go to item number five, I have to declare that I have a conflict of interest. And that conflict is, one of the streets being slurry sealed is within, uh, two hundred fifty feet of my residence. So, based on that, I will recuse myself. And prior discussion with Mayor Protem being attending the meeting in distance, Councilmember Aguilar will take the next item. Uh, so please wait till I step to the back, and then begin, please.
Hello, everybody, this is Councilmember Juan Aguilar Junior. Uh, we, uh, stated by the mayor, he had to recuse himself, so we take an item number five. Uh, item number five is the resolution to accept bid in the amount of one hundred and thirty two thousand and award a contract to VSS International Inc., West Sacramento, California, for the twenty twenty slurry seals project, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the agreement. And we have our engineer here to present that item.
Thank you. Um, again, this, this, uh, item is to accept, uh, the slurry seal project, uh, that was bid, uh, we controlled, uh, and the city received five bids. Uh, they were actually really good bids, the little bidder was VSS out of West Sacramento for a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. Uh, the, the work will be throughout some of the city streets, I know, uh, Main Street is one of them. Uh, public courts did some of the crack sealing prior to this, uh, slurry, and so that will, uh, be a nice project, and it's on this new, uh, measure fee. Well, I'll be glad to answer your question.
Thank you. Any discussion by council? Any questions? Councilmember Batista? Mr. Mayor Protem?
Negative.
I'll alternate up to the public, any public comment on the phone? I don't hear any, any public comment here. I don't see any from the further discussion council, I just have a couple of questions that I could ask, please. Um, so we received five bids, correct? And this was the lower?
Correct.
Um, have we done any work with this, uh, company in the past?
Yes, yes, that's a huge, huge outfit, and it threw out the, I think, western United States. They actually manufacture this interior, that's why they're so competitive. That's a huge outfit.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion by council?
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution, just wait. To accept a bid in the amount of one thousand three hundred, wait, one hundred and thirty two thousand and awarded contract to VSS International Inc., West Sacramento, California, for the twenty twenty slurry seals project, and authorizing the City Manager to execute the agreement.
We have a motion by Councilmember Batista, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Protem Garcia?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of three zero and one refusal.
We will call back, Mayor Protem Sama.
But City Clerk, please note the time of my, we're taking the meeting. Just wanna make note, make note of the time I took over the meeting. And I wanna thank Mr. Aguilar for taking the meeting. I didn't get a call from any committees, did I?
I just got a couple.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to item number six. This is a resolution reaffirming and God we trust as official model in the United States of America about proving the public display of national motto in Livingston City Council Chambers. And Mr. Ramirez?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a specific item that Councilwoman Batista had requested. So, we tried to make this as simple as possible, straightforward, and, uh, we kinda modeled a little bit after the City of Fresno to the council and to the public's, uh, information. The God we trust is own, not to modify any of our, our seal and, as per se, that you see, you know, letterhead and everything that we do. It's only for the council chambers, and so if you notice at the front portion of the diet, you see the city seal, and on the top, you say, God we trust. So, again, other municipalities have this, and, uh, this is for council's entertainment, and I'm sure that Councilwoman Batista might have some more information that she would like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Uh, Counselor Batista, this is your item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. I just wanna thank the, the council and, uh, for allowing, and, and again, it's, it's something that, uh, is of great, uh, value to our city, and that we recognize that, uh, we have wisdom, and however you wanna receive that wisdom, we wanna be able to provide it to you as our city leaders, um, within this, this, I guess, if this, uh, only into this building. But we'd like to, to address this fact that we wanna move forward, um, with guidance. So, again, I thank you for, um, considering this and bringing it here. And, uh, we will be, I think, the third in Resett County to present this, um, as a, uh, work that is being pushed forward, um, by a woman that I had met at a, uh, biggest league of cities conference. And this is a movement that's across the nation, so it's not only just, uh, specific to our city, but also to our county. So, again, we've, we've joined in on that, and, uh, moving forward, at, um, we see this So again, we've, we've joined in on that and, uh, moving forward at, um, we see this.
All of us here.
Are only looking at Los Angeles and City of Westside to join in this. And Westside County would have a one hundred percent victory over having a, um, well, one hundred percent of our city chambers, our council chambers, having this as their national motto in their chambers. So thank you.
One, one, one last comment.
Go ahead. Uh, before you do, uh, Mayor Fordham, I heard you announce your name. Was it because we were reconnecting or you had something to say?
Yes, that, um, uh, somehow dropped the call. I guess I was timed out or something.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I heard your name. I just want to make sure we didn't miss you, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ramirez, please.
Yes, and I know that, um, the in God we trust component, uh, we wanted to, I'm sure that Councilwoman Batista wants us to make sure that people understand that this, this is not referencing one specific God or religion. So whatever your faith is, whatever your God is, you need to take that, uh, and, 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 and accommodate your, your belief system. So again, just wanted to add last thing.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. This item is open to the public. Does anybody wish to make a comment? Anybody by phone? Anybody in the audience wish to make a comment? Seeing nobody coming forward, uh, uh, it is not closed to the public. Uh, council, any discussion?
I'm just, I'm just, Councilman Juan Aguilar. Um, I am, I know there's been talks about this in the past. Um, I'm in a hundred percent support of, uh, this, uh, resolution. Uh, reaffirming in God we trust as the official motto of the United States and proudly displaying it in our council chambers. Uh, as stated in the, uh, by our city manager and Councilmember Batista, this has been displayed in other jurisdictions, uh, throughout the valley and the country and the state. Um, to me, I see the community, um, of Livingston, uh, that has different faiths. But, uh, I think it will, uh, uh, be supported by community. As far as, uh, I've found a lot of, uh, a lot of people have contacted me and, and are in support of this. Uh, there are many churches in Livingston. Uh, so I, I am a hundred percent supporter of, of this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Batista, any further comments? Mayor Fordham?
Negative.
Negative?
I have a quick question, real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Ramirez.
Uh, first, uh, are we discussing of how it will be displayed or is it just, will that be discussed later or is it just the one that is currently there? Is there? Is that what, uh, the Councilmember Batista was, um, envisioning? Or you want it displayed in the back like, uh, other cities have it, like more permanent location?
At the time, I wanted to be able to display it. However, um, I know I want to be able to keep it simple. And again, I don't want to put any cost on the city to, to have, uh, something more neat. But in the future, yes, I would like to see something, a bit of a, um, and again, not making it so grandiose, but something that, um, i- is, is more appealing. I know I've seen some done in like a, a bronze or a type of metal, a sculpture type. Again, I don't want it to, um, I don't want the aesthetics of it to overtake the meaning. So, uh, if there's possibility that in the future, um, maybe from fundraising or so, that, uh, we can provide, uh, a little bit more. I know I get, I mean, I was able to get a display and I'm, I'm proud of that and, um, but, uh, again, that, that would be something in the future that if we could look at and discuss for another time. But yes, that would be something.
Thank you. And, uh, and for me, as Mr. Ramirez said and as Councilwoman Batista said, this is in God we trust. Doesn't point to any specific, uh, faith. It's very generic. And everybody can adopt it as their own. Any faith. So I'm fully one hundred percent in support of it. So at this time, Councilwoman Batista, would you like to make the motion?
Well, thank you very much. Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution reaffirming in God we trust as the official motto of the United States of America by approving the public display of the national motto in Livingston City Council Chambers.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Batista. Do you have a second?
I second it.
Uh, second by Councilmember Aguilar. May I have roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Summer?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Okay, uh, item number seven. This is a discussion addressing of the League of California Cities Division of Voting Delegates, an alternate to the annual conference, the next fall on August seventh to the ninth in twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor?
Who is our, I forgot, who is our legal representative?
Uh, not every year, every year you guys.
Uh, currently, currently. It's me. Okay, sure, sure, okay. Yeah, it was me, uh, last year, so.
Just a little bit of background information so that everybody knows. Uh, this year's, uh, League Conference, uh, everything is pointing towards a virtual, uh, uh, conference. So, so whoever is, uh, is, is, uh, will basically participate virtually. So with this item for you so that you guys can select who the delegate is and the alternate delegate in case, uh, of, of Councilmember, if Councilmember Fordham, um, can make it, as you wish.
Okay, thank you very much. The reason I asked was who was our, uh, a member is because I want to make sure that that person is also one of the voting delegates, be it virtual or on-prem. So, uh, at this time, uh, other than whoever our representative is, anybody else wants to volunteer?
If not, uh... Do we have to, um... Are you right now or can I get, can I get back to you on that? Or am I going already?
Do you, uh, well, are, are you our member we appointed to?
I can't remember who it is. Yes, it was me.
Okay, well then I'm asking for a volunteer. Would you be interested in attending?
Um, I would have to get back to you on that.
It can be virtual, uh, Mayor Fordham.
Sure. Okay, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, and, uh, we also need an alternate. Does anybody wish to volunteer to be an alternate?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mayor Fordham as a, uh, as a voting delegate and Councilmember Aguilar as an alternate delegate. Uh, can I get a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
Can I say anything? Uh, Mayor Fordham, second, sir? Okay, uh, may I get a roll call, please?
Roll call. Councilmember Batista? Yes. Councilmember Aguilar?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Garcia?
Yes.
Mayor Summer?
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of four zero.
Thank you. Item number eight. This is a discussion addressing regarding the city council meeting agenda procedures. So, Mr. Ramirez?
Uh, here, Council. This specific guidance was requested by Councilmember, uh, Aguilar and Councilmember, uh, Yagan D. King. So they wanted to look at and go over the, what the process is that they're ready to, the agenda presentation was to add and remove items from the agenda.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Aguilar, go ahead, please.
Yes, the question I had was, uh, what was the current policy, uh, not like in a meeting. Obviously, in the meeting, we could, uh, ask to put something on the agenda. But I'm, between meetings, if, uh, if something comes up, uh, they want to put on the agenda. I just wanted for, uh, clarification what the procedure is and, um, you know, possibly change it or, or if it's working for everybody.
Okay, uh, if I may. Currently, and as long as I can remember at this point, the procedure has been that any council member can request the item displaced on the agenda for a council meeting. Or they may make the request to the city manager. And to the city manager, depending on what compli- how complicated the item is, will prepare staff reports or whatever is needed to prepare for the agenda. Then a couple of days before the agenda comes up, based on the time or the complexity, the city clerk will send out an email to the mayor and the Mayor Fordham at that time. So we could at that time, mayor or the Mayor Fordham, say this item, depending on the complexity of the agenda, can move the items around to that meeting or the next meeting. And it is moved forward. Uh, the Mayor Fordham or the mayor can pull the item, but the item gets pulled, council member or the person requesting the item to be put on can get a, another council member, not two more, just one more, and say, we both want this item to be on this meeting. That will override staff, the mayor or the Mayor Fordham. An item will be placed there regardless of the decision based on the, on the mayor and the Mayor Fordham. And that is the current procedure at this time.
Does that go for the mayor and Mayor Fordham as well? So there's no oversight in regards to what items you got, uh, you guys put on the agenda?
Well, just like, uh, any council member, uh, Mayor Fordham or the mayor can at the meeting say, I wish to have this item placed at the agenda. Or just like any council member, they can go to the city manager and say, I wish to have this item put forward. So it's, the procedure is the same. The only thing with the mayor or the Mayor Fordham is to get a lookback, what's called a draft agenda. And it's not the entire package. It's just basically items which are going to be on the agenda. Just like when you get a final email that says these items, it's basically that. There is no staff reports attached to it. Just lying there and saying, what is this? So usually, what I've done over time has gotten with the city manager to, is this item ready to go or is there any questions from the legal? If they're both clear, they have, nothing has been, I don't believe anything has been objected to. And, and, but however, sometimes, uh, things may be done to balance it out. You don't want twenty items in one meeting, eleven of them. So it can be done for balancing purposes or staff preparation purposes. Other than that, nothing has, I don't think, never been rejected by anybody.
Okay, my, one of the main questions was in regards to when it's, an item is, when the council member tries to put out an item in, in the agenda and then say the mayor, Mayor Fordham take it out. There is a way of actually overriding that, just like getting the second person.
There has always been a way of saying, by two members, saying, I want this item on there. So regardless of this fifty items, this will be the fifty-first item. We can't override it. Now providing staff have the item prepared. If it's complex, it's not going to be ready. Obviously, unless it's an emergency, you couldn't do it on a Friday. You would have to wait till the following meeting. Now, but, but usually, I think any member, if they have an item that they requested, they would probably do a follow-up with staff prior to and say, is this item ready or not? Staff would already have told or advised, uh, requesting person, this item cannot be placed because legal is not ready with somebody. So, but that's where it would be at.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, just want to, the reason I'm asking and, and obviously, I just want to make sure that there is a clarification out there in general for, not only for the community, but other council members, uh, that there is a process and that items aren't being taken out and there's always a way of putting them in, you know, for clarification purposes and transparency.
Yeah, I am positive that any item was being pulled continuously without a good explanation. That particular individual, the council member, Mayor, Mayor or Mayor Fordham has the open forum to say, why is this not being put in? So you could actually get that information publicly. So there is that. So, okay? Uh, anything else, Mr. Aguilar? Uh, Councilwoman Batista, do you have any further comments or questions on this item? Mayor Fordham, do you?
Negative.
And for me, I hope I clarified it. And if any council member didn't have it, I will take the fault and say, it's my fault not having explained it to everybody earlier. But I don't think there was, it being objected, but at least we have it clarified now. Okay? Any further comments, sir? Mr. Aguilar?
No, I think that was the fact of what I was trying to, uh, that was the goal I was trying to, to reach, to that there's clarification.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Aguilar. Moving on to item number nine. This is a discussion in a direction on the recommended, uh, Hansford Economic Consulting Proposals Utility Rates. Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit of, one moment, please. Just a little bit of background. As you might recall, we started to, can everybody hear me okay? All right, all right. Just a little bit of background information. As you may recall, we started last year of, uh, the, the, the rate, uh, Hansford, um, economic. We got to the point where, uh, council, uh, basically moved forward with, uh, the analysis. We, we actually had workshops, communicated to the public what, uh, what the rates were going to look like. Uh, we were hoping to, um, you know, raise the rates in May uh, with acceptable, the solid way. It's not going to be, come into effect if council was to, uh, accept it until the January first of twenty twenty-one. And at that time, when we were looking at increasing the rates, councils, uh, basically said, come back to us, uh, prior to August and we'll see, we're going to decide and see what you want to do. So we kind of just, at this point, in anticipation of August, just around the corner, we wanted to make sure that we received directions from council. Like to us to do if, uh, if that's to propose, you know, bring, bring it back or wait until an alternate date. I know there's a lot of, of moving parts, but, uh, staff just wants to get some direction.
Council, any discussion? From Mr. Aguilar?
I know we, uh, did a lot of work in regards to this item and, uh, involved a lot of the community during the workshop. Uh, obviously with the COVID nineteen, nineteen situation, it's, it's a, it's a difficult, uh, item to tackle, I, I would say, I guess, because of the increased rates and the current economic situation for a lot of people in the community. Uh, in my, my opinion, it's, uh, you know, considering the times and we'd say to, you know, push it as, as much as possible out, um. You know, I, I know a lot of the jurisdictions and, and stuff like that are, you know, trying to assist the, the residents as much as possible in different ways. And, um, you know, it's, I would like to sort of do the same, obviously. And if this is somehow, some way of helping them by pushing it as, out as much as possible. Uh, you know, that'd be great. Um, I, but the same thing I understand and I know that there hasn't been any, uh, utility rate increases in a very long time. And that's something that obviously we undertook to, to look at and, and discuss because that was, uh, something that was needed. Um, so I am, I am torn in regards to this, but, uh, at the same time, I do understand the economic times and if we could push it out as much as possible, I mean, depending what the council, all those points that the council has and with the discussion, uh, we could keep on talking about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Baptista?
What exactly would that mean if we, if we pushed it out more? I mean, would we pick up, um, for the next year's rate? We bypassed the one that's coming up that we would have taken for, for this upcoming year and then just continue moving forward with another, what, maybe thirty cents more on top of what we had already discussed? I don't remember what they look like, but would we pick up or is it a complete new rate study if we didn't move forward with August?
Yes, so, so basically, what was being presented, uh, what was presented through the workshops and things of that nature was we were basically looking at about a five percent increase. Um, you know, starting in May and then for a solid way starting January first of two thousand and twenty-one. Of course, right now, because we keep pushing it off, but what's going to happen is that, um, one, there, there's not going to be a five-year window, so we're going to have to start a utility stakeholder session and study and analysis sooner than the five years. Um, you, um, we, we would like to not have to start all over and, 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 uh, finish off, but, you know, basically implement the rates that we currently have presented. Otherwise, we have to pay the rate consultant again and they have to do the analysis again, and then we have to start the Prop two eighteen hearing process again. Uh, the only thing that we're looking at is how much reserves do we have. We have to maintain, because of our bonding and stuff, we have to maintain what is called a one point two five coverage ratio. And so what we'll do between now and, and the next council meeting is we'll kind of figure what that's going to look like. And, and let you know, you know, kind of how much reserves we have. We don't have anything, right now, we are not collecting what we should be collecting for the services that we're providing. At least on the water and wastewater side, on the solid waste we have until the end of the year. With a little bit of that data, uh, you know, we can provide to council, but bear in mind is we're just kicking the can down the road. Of course, I understand. I wanted to make sure the council dynamics, because of COVID, because of some other strainers and so forth, is tough for everybody. So, the overall scenario, knowing that down the road, we're going to have to make some harder decisions because the more we push it out, the more they increase. To, to make it home.
Thank you. Council, any other further questions? Mayor Portem, any questions? Discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Aguilar about trying to push this out as, as far as we can and then, um, bring it back, so.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, for me, uh, we're going to be having a workshop on the fourth. Perhaps we can get a little information during the budget on what will entail to wait till the COVID crisis is over with. So perhaps we can get that at the same time. Okay? All right, uh.
Well, thank you, you. Mr. Mayor?
Uh, who's this?
This is Juan Aguilar.
Oh. Go ahead.
Uh.
Okay, uh, I think you cut off for a second here.
I was right, I was right next to you.
I know, but I thought I was hearing things.
Uh, okay, real quick, if you also include, obviously, the city didn't invest money in the workshop and the study, um, obviously, that's, uh,
Yeah.
financial impact the city took, you know, to make this a possibility. Uh, if you also include how much the pay, the city has paid, so forth and that, because, I mean, we should include all the information as possible to make the best, uh, determination and decision. And that, you know, does play a, a role in all of this, uh, because we did spend money on, on these studies and, uh, if you give us that number, you're for, uh, clarification and transparency. And, um, but also, I know it's a workshop and, um, and the utility stakeholders committee, um, was heavily involved with, with, you know, obviously, uh, I would like to hear from them and, uh, what they have to say as well. So maybe an invitation or at least a, shoot them an email, tell them that we're going to have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, council has already spoken on their part. I, this is open to the public. Does anybody wish to make a comment? Seeing nobody coming from the public, uh, council, uh, for the discussion? If not, any further business, council? We are in Germany. Thank you very much, everybody.